Call this means order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get approval of agenda or is there any changes?
One resolution, gambling resolution within American Legion.
Okay. Anything else, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Open forum. Is there anybody that would like to approach the council? Just state your name for the record, okay?
Joseph Arsenal. Um, I guess I don't really know how to do this. Basically, I'm just curious, I own an automotive shop that just went up, just on the other south side of the interstate. I've been having a hard time as far as parking, we tarred a decent amount of the, I'm sure you guys kind of all know where it is, the parking lot there, and we ran out of room. I didn't anticipate us to be as busy as we are, and we got cars all over working on. And the ones that I have for sale, I put granite out in front, and I put the five vehicles, I think it was that we had for sale out there, and basically just looking for a variance or adjustment to the CUP or something of that nature to allow me to do that until I can afford to pay that, hopefully next year.
What we do is we really can't comment on it. What we can do is we can send it back to planning and zoning, then they can go through, that'd be a fair.
Yep.
Yeah. What we have to do is we have to send it back to them, since they're in charge of all that, and then it can come formally in front of the council. Is there anything else? Feel free to.
A rough timeline on when I'm going to know as far as.
Well, as we discussed, the general timelines for any type of conditional use permit amendment or variances anywhere between, well, from the date of a complete application, we have 60 days.
60 days.
60 days from the date of that application.
We would need to talk about what application your attorney could submit, so that question's clear.
Yeah.
And then just to be clear, so I don't want to burn any bridges, it said on my CUP, I had a year to pave the lot or a year to do all these things. Am I still under that year? Can I park on there up until my year of occupancy? Because then by that time, we'll have this adjustment made.
Yeah, we'll have to, well, I'll, Lisa and I'll have to take a look at that to make sure, but we can definitely answer that question though.
I guess that's it.
All right. Thanks. Let me know if you have any questions, okay Joe? Okay. All right, is there anybody else I'd like to speak to open forum? Okay. Consent agenda, approval of minutes, bills, purchase orders, investments, ambulance, bad debt, community festival license, office assistant one step increase, and there was a gambling resolution for the American Legion post 101. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Elizabeth?
Yes.
Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities would like to speak, so feel free to come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a flipper?
I got it, yeah, I'll bring it to you.
Okay. Hi there, thank you Mayor and members of the city council for allowing me to appear here tonight. As the Mayor said, my name is Elizabeth Waifel, and I am an attorney lobbyist with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. For those of you who aren't familiar with our organization, we are an organization of, we're actually up to 97 cities now, we've had quite a bit of growth over the last two years, and we really work on issues that affect Greater Minnesota, focus it on, focusing on, you know, from that angle. The biggest thing we work on is LGA and property tax issues, but we also work on a variety of economic development issues, annexation and land use, transportation and environmental regulation. I'm going to talk to you today about what we did this legislative session, kind of how it affected all of our members, and then a little bit of preview of about what we expect for 2019. Even year is typically a, what they call a short session, it's usually focused on policy and bonding bills. This year, there was also significant focus on trying to get a tax reform package passed to sort of line up with the federal tax bill. There was also, they had a budget surplus, so anytime you have a budget surplus, I think legislators like to see something done with it, whether it be tax cuts or spending, and there was also a real need for a pension bill. You know, we continue to have pension issues statewide, and it's been three years since we've gotten one thing, anything done. However, a big challenge for us was is that there was a lot of obstacles to a smooth session. Probably the biggest obstacle was the relationship or lack thereof between the governor and the legislature. Some people would point to the veto of the Legislative Operating Fund, probably goes back further than that. Either way, it was harder to get things done than it should have been. Razor-thin majority in the Senate made passage of bills difficult, and then, you know, the controversy over the President of the Senate serving as Lieutenant Governor, and an election year made for a lot of interesting politics. Sorry, I keep flipping the wrong way. In terms of what we focused on this year, one of our top priorities was the bonding bill, particularly getting more money into water and wastewater infrastructure, continuing to educate legislators regarding the high cost of regulatory compliance, and I'm talking about environmental regulatory compliance, continuing LGA advocacy, working on corridors of commerce, trying to get more money for city streets, and then finally highlighting a childcare shortage issue and trying to advance some solutions. And that's just a highlight, there's other things that were worked on as well, but those are the big things. Really, the biggest bonding thing was the water and wastewater infrastructure. This is something we have been hammering on for a number of years, and in 2017, you know, we finally got the legislature, technically it was 2016, but the bonding bill collapsed at the last minute, so it passed in 2017, but we've been hammering on both the need for regulatory reform and the need to put more money to the Public Facilities Authority for grants and loan programs for our cities. So last year, we were able to help get the largest amount of PFA funding ever at about 130 million. This year, we introduced a bill for 167 million dollars. But the second thing we did, you know, we do a lot, I talk to our cities a lot, we do a lot of research on this, we're beginning to realize that even if our cities qualify for all of the, you know, the maximum amount of loans and grants currently available from PFA programs, it still leaves our cities often, particularly kind of our small to mid-sized cities with a gap in funding. And what that means is that sewer rates can go up significantly. Sorry, I keep going to the wrong direction. So, our response to that was we actually introduced a bill in creating a new supplemental grant program, and what this grant program would do is basically, if you are having to upgrade your wastewater sewer facility, and the cost of that would either kick your sewer rates to two times the metro average, or the amount you're getting from the PFA does not equal half the cost, you would be brought up to that level. We think that's extremely important because, you know, our cities simply don't have the same scale that they do in the metro area, and cannot afford to be addressing these issues. So, very popular amongst a number of different legislators, sorry, I am going to get this right, really did a lot of stuff on this, press conferences at both, you know, beginning and middle of the session, guest columns, multiple legislative hearings, and as a result, we really are beginning to be seen by legislators as the go-to expert organization on these issues of infrastructure, funding and ideas. We were happy to see that there was 123 million dollars for wastewater and water in the bonding bill that was passed. We would have liked to have seen more, I think the biggest challenge was is the legislature was very kind of stuck on this idea of we're going to have an 825 million dollar bonding bill, when you have something that large, getting any, you know, getting any sizable amount for wastewater and water is challenging. The other challenge that we saw with this, even after the legislation passed, the legislature, because of their target, decided to finance at least part of the environmental money through a new kind of revenue source. We were very worried that the governor was going to veto over this, and spent a lot of time even after the session lobbying to make sure that didn't happen. With respect to the grant program, we were happy to see the legislators engage on that, we got it into several versions of the bonding bill. Unfortunately, when it came to end of session negotiations, the PFA is still not happy with the program, so it was pulled out of the bill, but we are going to continue pushing on it, and hopefully next year, we'll be able to make some more progress on it. Sometimes we have found when you are creating new programs like that, it can take a session or two for it to take hold, but there was a lot of interest. We were able to make some policy changes in the bonding bill that we were happy about. Probably the biggest thing for our cities is that the MPCA is now required to, when they're putting together a new wastewater permit for our cities, they're required to look at your, the impact to your debt service that the additional amount would have on cities. The other thing I think that's really important that we worked on this year was the environmental regulatory certainty, which basically allows if you are upgrading your wastewater facility, it gives you some time, about 16 years before you would have to do some new items. We actually worked on a host of environmental issues, I'm not going to go through every single one, but there is a copy of a list in that report I handed out with more on what we did. Transportation was quite a bit of work at the legislature this year as well. Different approaches in the Senate and House made it challenging, the Senate did not want to spend any money on roads, whereas the House was willing to use the surplus for it. We did support the House bill, one thing we have really been pushing on, a couple years ago, we helped create a city-street program for small cities, you're probably familiar with it. It's our goal, we need to get permanent funding for that. There was some funding for it in the House bill, and there was money for corridors of commerce, another program we helped create a few years back. But probably the biggest issue that was, that happened around transportation was the constitutional amendment. You may be familiar with this, there was a proposal to dedicate a portion of the sales tax attributable to auto parts to roads and bridges. We had significant concerns about that. You may wonder, why would you care? You know, because some of it might go to help your cities, but one of the things we have learned from doing this for the last 30 years is that when there's a budget crisis, one of the first things they go after is local government aid and similar programs like county aid and other programs like that. Our concern is, is that anytime you put spending limits in the Constitution, when you have a budget crisis, it can really hit your other programs, and so we don't think that that kind of thing is a great way to be doing budgeting. We worked with a coalition of different groups to push back on it, it did pass the House, but stalled in the Senate Tax Committee. Corridors of Commerce, another area, again, we helped create this program a number of years ago, it's really aimed at funding those roads, like 94 right out there, that help connect our cities. If you look at this map, what this shows, if you look at the red and green, that's where it's been funded over the last 23 years. But during the last legislative session, in an effort to try and make sure that Greater Minnesota got at least 50% of the funding, they put some new criteria in place. We had concerns about the way the criteria were structured, and as it turned out, our concerns were probably correct. If you look at this, I know it's hard to see up there, I'll show you a little bit advanced here, but basically, the money going to Greater Minnesota is that little orange line there and that little orange line there, and I think we all believe that Melrose, or excuse me, Albertville and Elk River are very fine cities, but it's probably not what a lot of us are thinking of in terms of Greater Minnesota. And so, true to form, we did kick up a fuss, and that's what we do, is we really raised the issue throughout the state. Greater Minnesota media really helped us on this, and we're also very critical, and we asked the legislature to really make it right for Greater Minnesota. And so what ended up happening was is 400 million dollars in the bonding bill was allocated so that it would go to additional programs in Greater Minnesota, you know, more outside, a little further outside the metro area. Again, those were good programs they funded, but we really thought the money needed to get spread out a little more. So you can see, again, those green lines, part of Highway 23 was funded, and then part of Highway 14 was funded as a result of this additional money. Federal tax changes really had an impact on what was discussed with respect to LGA. Our goal has been and continues to be trying to get the LGA funding back up to the 2002 level. One of the other things, though, that we're working on is, we helped back in 2013 reform the formula, but one of those things, you know, cities changes, times change, that we've recognized that the formula, it's a good formula, but it needs to be tweaked a little bit to make it more dynamic so that our cities don't flatten out in their funding. So we introduced two bills, one for 30.5 million dollar increase and another for updating the need factors. This is kind of Melrose's history with LGA, kind of you're up to about 835,000, you can kind of see the, went down after 2002 and has gone through a number of changes. It would have gone up under our proposal. Unfortunately, with the tax bill, like I said, they focused primarily on federal tax conformity, and this was one of those areas, the governor and the legislature couldn't see eye to eye. They got a tax bill through, but it got vetoed. Childcare, now this is an issue that we have really started to bring into focus the last two years, because we were hearing from everybody across the state that Greater Minnesota's particularly having issues finding quality childcare. So we advocated for a number of different proposals, including a grant funding, also trying to do some regulatory reform because of things that are getting in the way, particularly in Greater Minnesota. There was funding for this new childcare grant program that we introduced, that was contained in what they called the Omnibus Omnibus Bill, you may have heard about this, but at the legislature, they decided to pile all of the budget bills into one large Omnibus Omnibus Bill of about 1,000 pages. Unfortunately, when you create something that large, it has a lot of good things, a lot of sometimes bad things, and the governor threatened to veto it and carried through on that. So, we are happy that the program was at least created and are hopeful that we can get it through next year. In terms of BDPI, I mentioned, or excuse, bonding, mentioned the wastewater money. Another program that we helped create, oh gosh, it's been at least 20 years ago, and we continue to vigorously defend, is the Minnesota, Greater Minnesota Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant Program, and I think almost all of our cities have used it, you know, once or multiple occasions. Last year, we, as a result of our bill that we introduced, there was 12 million dollars dedicated to it, unfortunately, or actually, it's kind of good, but there was such a strong request for that money that half of it was gone by the beginning of the session, so we introduced a second bill to put more money into it, and we're able to get 5 million dollars in the bonding bill. But this really has been one of the most successful economic development programs, continues to be used, we continue to push for funding. We've run into challenges sometimes through the years, because the metro likes it so much, they want to take advantage of it, but we've been able to keep this as an exclusively Greater Minnesota program. Looking forward to next year, and I'll just say, there's a lot more that we worked on this year, like I spent a lot of time working on annexation issues, but the rest of that is in the report, and if you have questions about any of the other details, you can give us a call afterwards. But, looking forward to 2019, one thing we know, we're going to have a new governor. Looks like it's either going to be Congressman Walz or County Commissioner Jeff Johnson, we don't know who it will be yet. We could have a flip in the majority of the House, not really sure, I'm not familiar enough with the races that are out there to give you a good likelihood on it just yet. There's also possible, and you're probably familiar with this, the possibility that the Senate could flip majority as a result of Senator Fishbach stepping down to become Lieutenant Governor. I think that's less likely to happen, but a lot of things in play. It will be a budget year next year, which means they have to pass the state budget. We will be hoping for a tax bill as well, although that's not something they have to pass. But it's hard to predict this year whether there's a surplus or a deficit. We are going to be active this election season, this is one thing that we have found is really helpful, is that we start engaging with legislators even before they get into office. And we, earlier this summer, sent out a candidate packet regarding issues about Greater Minnesota to everybody running for the legislature, whether they're in rural Minnesota or in the metro. Hosted a governor's candidate forum in July, you can see that video on YouTube. We will be doing five to eight legislative candidate forums on Greater Minnesota issues throughout the state, and we'll be monitoring what candidates say about our issues. Opportunities for next season, we will be pushing for that LGA increase, we are going to continue to develop a comprehensive package to address childcare shortage. I know that, because this is the issue I work on, we'll be continuing to make water and wastewater infrastructure funding a priority, and continuing to look for opportunities on that, and then permanent additional funding for city streets. That's, again, a high priority for us. The city street program has been successful, but it needs to be funded permanently and at a higher level. Upcoming events, if any of you are available, our fall conference is right up the road in Alexandria, November 15th and 16th. I think it's going to be a pretty good one this year, because we'll know who the new governor is, we'll know who's going to be controlling the legislature, and we'll be talking about our legislative program and how you can help us advocate on that. Legislative Action Day, this has become our most successful event of the year. We've actually, it's gotten so large that we actually had to move it out of our offices to a much larger space in St. Paul, but if you can make it down from that, it's a day to go talk to your legislators, we educate you on how to lobby, and then get out there with you and talk to legislators, and then our summer conference next year will be in Bemidji. I want to thank all of you at Melrose for participating in the CGMC. This organization, again, it's been there for 30 years, really to take the forefront on Greater Minnesota city issues. We're in the process of getting our committees set up for next year. If any of you are interested in getting more involved on our committees, we are always looking for more help. If you want to ask us any questions about things, please give us a call, Michael has all of our contact information, but an engaged membership really helps us do better, and that's that membership throughout the state that really helps us achieve success at the legislature. So, thank you, I know that was a lot of information, does anybody have any questions?
I did have a question.
Okay.
What can you do with the childcare? I mean, for the most part, it seems like it's more of your licensing mandates are what's killing our daycares in central Minnesota.
You know, it's interesting, so this issue is really kind of, you know, from what I understand, it's been out there for a number of years, but people have started bringing it to their city councils within the last couple of years, and we held a forum on this at our fall conference last year, and it seems like it's coming down to a number of issues. There are some regulatory changes that need to be made, and that's something that we're looking at, introducing legislation around, trying to refine some of the requirements there, working with different organizations. There's also other challenges in terms of, depending upon where it's located, the way, it's hard for, particularly in small to mid-sized communities, to pay competitive wages, and so that's why we're looking for different ways to do grants, to try new and creative ways of achieving that. Other cities are running into problems that they don't have physical space to do it, so we actually introduced a bonding package to try and actually build out in some portions of the state, you know, provide grants to do more of it. So it's a, we're looking at a number of different things, sort of based on what we're hearing, because we definitely hear the regulatory component, and that is a piece of what we're trying to work on, but we're also trying to address some of these other components as well. But it's a multifaceted issue, we got a lot of great feedback last year at our conference, and are continuing, you know, working with foundations and economic development organizations on what is going to be the most sort of effective tools to address this problem. And Greater Minnesota does face some different challenges, I mean, there's challenges in the metro area as well, but it seems to be just because of the size of the cities and availability of talent, it is slightly different issues, so. And I'll admit, I am the land use and wastewater lobbyist, but if you'd like to know more, I can have our person who handles this follow-up on it as well.
That's good.
I can talk a lot about wastewater or annexation. In fact, I get a little too giddy about it, it's kind of weird.
Well, thank you very much for being here, we really do appreciate it.
Yep, well, thank you, and like I said, would love to have anybody who's interested to get involved, just give us a call. Thank you.
Thank you.
Police Department, monthly report, Chief Mouse.
Good evening. Our July statistics, statistics. In our traffic area, we had 32 citations issued, 111 verbal warnings and one written warning. This year, we had 423 calls or requests for service, last year was 299, so we're up by 124 calls or requests in July. We ended on ICR 3,012, and last year was 1959, so we're about 1,050 calls over last year. We're on pace to go over 5,000 calls, closer to 5,100. Our highest has been right over 4,04200 in the past, so it's been a busy year so far, and if the pace keeps up, we will surpass those numbers. Agency assists, 28 agency assists, consistent with what we've normally had. Some areas that I'd like to highlight, we had our night to night beginning of this month, a big thank you to the Freeport State Bank for providing the hot dog plate meal like they do each year, as well as all the organizations that came out for the community to be able to see, talk with, maybe even get involved with, as well as just getting to know your neighbors, getting to know your public safety people, those sorts of things. School starts about two weeks out, give or take. Reminder, pedestrian, bike traffic, school buses, all those sorts of things. Get used to seeing them again, little bit of change, little time off for the summer here, but we had a fair number of issues up at the public school area with the crossing guards in the morning as far as people violating the school patrol flag, so we'll be focusing heavily on that, especially at the beginning of the year and then throughout if we have any issues. Reminder also to lock your vehicle doors, we've had some vehicles that have been unlocked, individuals are going into them, taking items out of the vehicle, nothing of significant value, but they're not touching any of the vehicles that have their doors locked, so please lock your doors, you'll be able to keep all of your stuff, if you do that. So. Questions? Comments?
Sorry, just like the attention.
Obviously.
Do you have anything that you can attribute to both the monthly and year-to-date increase?
Some of it is our traffic area, our officers have been more aggressive in the traffic area. When we did discuss hiring on the fifth officer, that was an area that we can actively or proactively get involved in as far as our drug issues we do have in town, and our officers have taken that heart and said, well, that's what you say, boss, and we're going to go and go to work. And we have turned up small amounts of things and some decent amounts of other things. We did assist the county on a traffic stop, they got eight ounces of methamphetamine, which, weight-wise doesn't seem like a whole lot in a world of weight, but it's huge values of methamphetamine on the street, roughly about 25,000 dollars. So, and that was just off a traffic stop. So. Anything else?
Appreciate it. Thank you, Chief.
Lisa, Planning and Zoning Commission report.
We have you kind of a full write-up in your packet, but basically, a quick overview, the Planning Commission at their August meeting reviewed and held a public hearing for the rezoning for Coburns, and they also reviewed the comp plan amendment for Coburns, and the public hearing for that will be tonight. They also reviewed signage and were prepared to recommend a sign ordinance to you, however, there were some First Amendment rights issues that came up with a portion of it, and so that will be back on the agenda for the Planning Commission to review in September, so you will probably see it in your, at your September meeting. Also on the September agenda for the Planning Commission is the rezoning of the City Hall property, which is currently zoned R1 and should be more appropriately zoned public, and then the former Kraft lot will do at the same time, and that will be zoned to the new C5 downtown commercial zoning district, or downtown mixed-use zoning district. For MATA, we anticipate Carstens being on the next agenda, they've submitted an application related to a new building addition that they're planning to do. Regarding building permits, we received a building permit, two building permit applications actually related to Burger King, one for the interior remodel, they're doing a very substantial interior remodel that will really update the building, I think it's 250,000 dollar value. And then regarding the interior cleanup work of the lower level, they're doing some reinforcing of the existing piers, they're adding sonotubes around four of the existing piers, just because the floor, the ground level's lowered so much that they want to make sure that they're reinforced well, and then they're adding one additional helical pier and doing some other additional work underneath just to get that finished up, so. Are there any questions? So, are there any questions?
Thank you, Lisa. City Attorney Report, Mr. Scott.
Good evening. Two items in the legal report this evening. Continue to work on the Charter cable franchise. The city administrator and I have had a couple of conference calls with the charter representatives and then been exchanging proposals and drafts and language. We have another one scheduled for Monday afternoon. I think we're getting pretty close. I think we'll have something to bring to the council before too long. Again, you know, these are long-term franchises. They run fifteen years, and we have to be cautious because we have two cable franchise companies, and we can't show favoritism in the terms of franchise. We've got to treat them even-handedly. So, we've been trying to educate. I don't think Charter really expects to come to a town in Melrose and find another cable operator operating, so we've had to do some educating as to how it's, we need to work here. I'm sure they know it. They just were maybe hoping we didn't. The other item, just to follow up, was last month or the month before. You get, the council issued abatement orders for a couple of nuisances. I don't think it will come as a surprise. I was just visiting here with Chief Mouse, and nothing has been done in response to your orders, and so we filed them with the court. I've got all the pleadings drafted to ask the court for the order, and I've been in contact with the court. I'm just waiting to hear from them on a hearing date. So, once we get a hearing date, we'll go to, file to the judge, and we'll have the judge tell them they have to clean up their property, and if they still don't, then the city can go in there and do it for them and assess the cost back on their property. So, that's still in the works. That's all I've got tonight, unless the council has questions. Thank you.
All right, we're done with reports. We're just gonna, oh, I'm sorry. Tessa, I'm sorry. General Fund Financial Quarterly Report.
Good evening. For the General Fund, revenues are at about twenty-seven percent. The other half of the property taxes will come in July. The first half of the local government aid will come in July, and then the second portions come at the end of the year. And between property taxes and LGA, that makes up a huge chunk of our revenue budget. Police state aid is also received in September, as well as our administrative services will come towards the end of the year. One thing that is a little different is we took about thirteen thousand five hundred dollars from the general administrative charges. We had some excess funds from the credit union TIF district that we needed to remit back to Stearns County. So, those funds will then be divvied up between Stearns County, the school district, and the city. So, we'll be getting those back probably in 2019. Health insurance is coming in under budget, and also one thing of note is our miscellaneous expenses are high relating to the brush cleanup from the 2017 windstorm that we had. For MATA, the revenues are running low and expenditures are pretty much right on track. The miscellaneous ones are slightly higher due to a grant application that was done. Ambulance has been a busy year again. Revenues are slightly higher than projected at fifty-seven percent. One thing of note is the ambulance department and the fire department have both done some maintenance expenses at the fire and ambulance hall. They've done some painting and other fees or other projects. And maintenance fees are higher for the ambulance fund from the Lucas machines that were purchased. For the capital project, the revenues are high because we have received about three hundred thousand dollars from the state relating to the First Street project, and a lot of those costs will be incurred in the third quarter. We've started a lot of that in the second quarter, but in July and August, those were paid. And for our debt service funds, we've made all of our principal and interest payments for the year, and then the second half of the property taxes to reimburse those funds will be coming in in December. So, overall, everything is running right where we would expect it to be.
Any questions? All right. Now we're done with reports. We were going to do one thing before we get to the public hearing. We're going to go to eight B industrial park land lease.
So, we saved Butch a little time so he doesn't have to sit for the whole meeting. So, yeah, Butch, if you would just mind just heading out there. Not asking too much from you tonight. So, what happened is the city has our industrial park. We've been trying to, you know, find a way to maintain that thing a little bit more cost-effective, as well as to see it back in the tax roll, at least temporarily. So, we put out it all for a public bid, didn't get much of an interest. Butch did approach us here, and we came to a handshake agreement that we think that's palatable for both the city as well as for Butch, and so we're recommending to approve the agreement as presented, but we would finalize the agreement next year once we know what the final taxes are going to be. So, and then also Butch would cover the, all the, he would pay for the hay on the industrial park this year at the market rate, whatever that might be.
Yes. When I take off, I'll pay you that much for taking it off. You know, see how it is, and we'll go on that. So, that's what I'll do, and I want to be real fair with you guys. Like I told Gary, we farm it. We'll leave that road right through the middle that you don't have to drive around where it's wet or anything, and...
And you're planning to plant corn, is that right?
Yes, I'm going to plant corn in it next year. That's what I'm going to do. I'm going to work, I'll get that grass net, all that old stuff off now, and I want to work it yet this fall, have it all worked up, and then put corn in it next year. And then I'll get ahold of Deb or you, then we can get the taxes switched over that, you know what, we're going to know exactly what it is.
And the city would still be responsible for the special assessments? He would not be responsible, unless we want to work that into it.
Yeah.
But for the property taxes, he would cover the property taxes?
Cover the tax on what we got there, so. They said twenty-seven acres, so. Yep. If that works, and we'll have it down, it's going to be my, well, Chris, we're going to have it on both of ours that we're going to do it together, so.
Sure.
Okay?
So, it's staff's recommendation to adopt as presented.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
One second.
All right. Home favors say aye.
Aye.
Who's motion carry? Thank you, Butch.
Thank you, guys, very much, and we'll be keeping in touch with it, so.
All right. Thank you, Butch. Thank you.
So, do you want me to talk to Deb or?
Yes.
I'll get ahold of Deb that she gets all set up, that we get it all switched over, and we'll have that taken care of.
And then I'll, we'll get this agreement signed, so you can give that to her, so.
Yep. You get that signed, and then I'll get, we'll get that cleaned off here next week.
Perfect.
Cut down all the old dust and everything.
Good deal. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Not really.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. It is six forty-five. Public hearing case number seven dash twenty eighteen dash five oh nine, approval of the amendment to the comprehensive planned future land use map from single-family residential to downtown, downtown commercial to former residential lots immediately west of Coburns. Lisa.
Thank you. We've got an application before us tonight for rice companies. Thomas Bruce submitted on behalf of Coburns, and they would like to re-guide two properties so that they can add some parking. At this point, that is what their plan is. They're adding just one row of parking to the west side of their current westerly parking row, and then a row of just a driveline beyond that so that they can access those parking spaces. So, it's a total of fourteen additional parking spaces that they are proposing. Included in your staff report are the comments related to comprehensive plans and the process for approving them as outlined by the League of Minnesota Cities, as far as the comments to consider when doing comprehensive plan amendments, and also a list of the comprehensive plan references. As we look through the comprehensive plan, all of the comments basically were in support of supporting existing businesses as they grow and extending the downtown area out as opposed to growing outside of the main core areas of the city. So, it, the comprehensive plan supports infill development. The review of the facts is also included in your packet. The planning commission did review the packet at their meeting and approved the adoption of the findings of facts, and they do recommend approval. There are no conditions on the resolution. It is just a simple comprehensive plan amendment resolution. Are there any questions? Let you open the public.
Yep. All right. I'll open the public hearing if anybody would like to speak. All right. It is six forty-seven. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Can I get a second?
Second.
Home favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. We will act on them coming up next. On to seven. Action items, resolution number twenty seventeen dash thirty-seven, resolution approving comprehensive plan amending request by rice companies for Coburns Incorporated. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. First, second. Home favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. B, ordinance number eight dash sixteen dash twenty eighteen dash one, ordinance amending the City of Melrose zoning ordinance number nineteen eighty-nine dash one dash A as amended and adopted by reference as Charter one fifty-three of the City of Melrose Code of Ordinances to rezone lots three and lot four, block seven on township, or townsite of Melrose owned by Coburns Incorporated for residential R1 to C1 commercial downtown. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. All right. We're on to see pay voucher number three, First Street Northeast, Fourth Avenue Northeast Improvement Project. Mr. Nielsen.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, attached is pay voucher number three in the amount of two hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. To date, the contractor has completed five hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and twenty, or six hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty cents. The remaining work that is not on this is the striping, signage, and the final lift of the batuminous that will be put on next fall. By looking at the numbers of things that we have to pay for yet, I think we're going to be probably about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars under budget or under bid. There are a couple of extras for storm sewer, some sanitary sewer work that will be added in, but even with those extra costs, we will be about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars under the bid cost. So, one of the things that we did not do was we thought there may need to be some subgrade excavation out by the post office. That material turned out to be fine, so we saved that cost, and the batuminous numbers ran a little bit under estimate. We usually add five, five to ten percent on for quantity, so they stayed pretty much on, you know, what was actual calculation. So, some of those underruns are not anticipated, but certainly welcome. So, we have some cleanup work to do. In addition, I think Mike and I had talked today over in the craft lot. I think when we took out that building, the existing gravel by the new entrance closest to City Hall, it's pretty sandy. We're going to try to add some class five in there to stabilize that, and probably add some class five at the other entrance also. With the addition of the sidewalk, we've got kind of a steep roll over there, so we'll add some class five in there to make that a little bit more desirable to drive through for smaller cars, so. And again, they got to get the silt fence taken out of the craft lot and just generally clean up before winter here, so. You may have noticed that the, it looks like I put the stop signs in, they're a little bit higher than they should be, but they'll have to get those lowered, so.
Yeah, it's you or Gary, you know?
Yeah. Their minimum height is seven feet. They're putting it at about eight feet, so I'm not sure why they did that, but I get a stiff neck looking at them. So, we'll get those lowered and things cleaned up here across the street, so. Are there any questions?
Two questions. So, you had mentioned that the wear course won't go on until next fall?
Yeah. We did put it on Fourth Avenue because we needed to do that to receive the state funding next spring. Did I say fall?
You said fall.
I'm sorry. Spring.
Next spring.
Yes.
And so obviously those funds will be held back until that's completed.
Correct.
And then do we hold any sort of retainage if?
We have five percent retained until the project is complete, so we'll hold those funds through the winter.
So, if there is any boils or anything that you find?
Absolutely. Yep.
They're going to come back and do a little work. We identified a couple of bird baths that we got on some of the alleys, and so when it's a little warmer out there, I'll be able to actually come back with the roller and try to modify that slightly if I can.
Those, well, either big flat areas like the parking lot or those areas in the alley where you've got so many things to pave around, those are a little bit difficult, so we'll try to work out what we can hopefully improve that, so. Any other questions?
I'm looking for approval of the pay voucher number three.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. D, resolution number twenty eighteen dash thirty-eight, resolution adopting special assessments for repaving of the dam incorporated parking lot, three nineteen Main Street East parcel number. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Interfund loan, public improvement, TIF nine dash one, Boomerang slash TIF nine dash three, RS Auto.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, what this is, is that we did a small sidewalk project over there. We do anticipate some excess tax increment, and therefore we would recommend to be able to allocate funds to pay for that sidewalk out of those excess increments as they come in. So, we just need to formally adopt the, this as a justifiable expense since it is within the district, and it is also a reasonable cost. Next year or the year after, when we do the rest of the extension, if there's also additional funds, we would use those funds to continue that sidewalk as we move forward there, so. Penning your questions, first action is to authorize a reimbursement up to thirty-five hundred dollars for the sidewalks within District nine dash three with available increment with, within District nine dash three according to the state statutes by approving the resolution and obligating and adding the TIF payment schedule kept by the city finance officer. So, that'd be motion number one.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
And this one here is the same thing. It's a motion to authorize the reimbursement of twenty-two fifty-one of the sidewalk improvements. Those are the actual costs now with excess increment from District nine dash three in excess of, as we identified. So, penning your questions, staff's recommendation is to approve as presented.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
One second.
Okay. Home favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. F, Melrose, County Road thirteen, bridge relocation and Sock River realignment, EAW.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you recall, the council authorized preparation of an EAW for the bridge relocation and channel relocation. WSB completed that effort, submitted that to the EQV or the Environmental Equality Board, and there was a thirty-day comment period. Why was the EAW completed? Due to the channel realignment, it was a mandatory according to the state statute, so. Next slide, please. I'm glad you're up, because it looks to be harder than it looks.
It is harder than it looks. There you go. There you go, just the next slide when you're ready.
Okay, uh, what's the purpose of the EAW? Uh, it's to disclose information to the public about potential environment, environmental impacts, uh, from the project, so, uh, and determinative environmental impact statement is necessary. Uh, it's to identify how the project can be modified to lessen environmental, environmental impacts, and it is not in the, in approval process, so, uh, the process to complete the EAW, the RGU or Regulatory Government Unit is, which is the city in this case, prepares the EAW and submits it to the EQB for the, the mandatory thirty-day comment period, uh, which did end on July twenty-fifth. Uh, copies are sent out to, uh, essentially every alphabet state agency that there is. Uh, copies were sent also to the library here, and I think a copy was available at City Hall for the public, uh, to review. Uh, each agency and the public can submit, uh, comments regarding the project, uh, and then the city responds to those comments, uh, back to the, uh, agencies, then prepares the finding of fact document. Uh, the council then evaluates the finding of fact and determines, uh, that the if an environmental impact statement is necessary, which is, uh, your challenge tonight, so, uh, we did only receive two comments, one from Shippel. Uh, they want us to do a phase one environmental, which the city has contracted with a consulting firm to, uh, complete that, and what they do is, essentially they do a, a, a paper search, uh, for any historical type things that may be present in the project area. Uh, typically, you might expect, not in this case, but what they would be looking for would be Indian artifacts, that type of thing, uh, related to the history, so. Uh, MPCA did have some comments, uh, really, their comments were related to erosion control, sediment loss downstream, and all those things are gonna be, uh, addressed during the final design, and the, the BMPs or best management practices will, uh, control those issues. So, uh, our recommendation is that in the E, uh, EIS is not required, and that we have satisfied, uh, all the concerns of the agencies, uh, with our finding of facts, so, uh, at this point, if there's any questions, otherwise you can, uh, consider the resolution before you tonight.
Can I get a motion to accept the resolution?
Remove.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Security camera at Sock River Park.
Yeah, if I may, and this is maybe a conversation between myself and Gary and the council here, uh, but bottom line is that the, we've been having issues down at the Sock River Park. Uh, people have been, uh, neglect at maintaining the facility at times, and they've been doing damage, and, um, we've also looked at ways to mitigate that, we looked at trail cameras, some very cost-effective solutions, however, those cost-effective solutions have not yielded the perpetrators that have been doing the damage. So, in cooperation with the Public Utilities Commission, the Utilities Commission is installing, uh, security cameras at their new substation that they're building, and so what we did is we sought cam, we sought quotes that would be incomparable and in unison with the camera systems with the utilities, so we have one camera system versus multiple camera systems that we have out there. So, we got two quotes, we got one from a local vendor that does this, a, as well as the same vendor that's doing the work for the utilities. Having looked at that, it came in about three thousand dollars cheaper to go with the one with the utilities. Um, the challenge that we have here is that the Parks Fund does not have the full allocation of funding to, to fund this. So, they're asking, the Parks Fund is, they did save money on their, um, on their picnic tables this year, so they have about forty-five hundred dollars they could take from that fund and put towards the cameras, and they would ask for assistance from the city council for the other half of those funds to cover that camera. The cameras are a set and, uh, set them and forget them type thing, so you, there's no annual maintenance fees associated to it, um, so if they go bad, you have to replace it, but these cameras are, they're designed in such a way that there's very limited maintenance to them. Uh, we also have a, uh, a radio bridge or a, excuse me, a, an internet bridge that we've set up for communication, so we don't have to have separate, um, wifi connections out of the Sock River Park, we can just use our bridge, uh, remote bridge to make that become a reality. So, it's a very cost-effective solution, we feel, uh, but the Parks Board needs your help to fund, to fund this project, so. Pen in your questions, or Gary, do you have any other comments? Did I miss anything? So?
Gary, have you seen the system? I mean, have they showed you? How clear is it? I mean, before we go spend, what, thousands of dollars, have we seen how clear the cameras are? Cause if, if you can't make out what's there, uh, you're, all you're gonna see is a blurry, blurry shadow walking through, so.
Basically what we were told is they're gonna install six cameras in different directions, and they're gonna have one camera that actually should be as sophisticated enough to realize and play.
Okay.
From the old, you know, uh, when someone comes in, that's basically, we've never seen an actual camera.
Mm-hmm.
But, I guess they're all there.
I've, I've, I've actually seen it. I have, I have actually examples of the video that I could be happy to share if you're interested in seeing it, but it's a high-quality video.
Yeah, okay.
It's something that would be admissible in, into court and reasonable. Um, that's why the Utility Commission went with that, um, in regards to those quality of the cameras.
Okay.
So, it's, and I can, happy to say.
I just know there's differences in cameras, and I'm not saying that the other persons are better, I'm just saying that.
Yeah, and we made sure that we had an apples-to-apples comparison.
Okay.
We absolutely did, yeah.
Good. Good enough for me. Okay, uh, can I get a motion to provide consideration to allocate funds to approve the low bid from Argent Services?
Remove.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Home favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Fire Department Officer Assignment, uh, for, uh, Mr. Schmidt to be training officer, can I get a motion to approve?
Remove.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Fire Department policy update.
Yeah, there's really not much to change with this thing, it's just mostly changing out, uh, HR Coordinator to City Administrator, Finance Coordinator, um, and also Finance Director, excuse me, and then it also addressed the, uh, quorum quali, the quorum requirements, right?
For the meeting, so it was just basically some verbiage updates, it hadn't been for eight years.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
Remove.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Alright, old business. Uh, number eight dash sixteen dash twenty eighteen dash two, an ordinance amending zoning ordinance number nineteen eighty-nine dash one dash A as amended, adopted by reference as charter one fifty-three of the Melrose City Code Amending Charter six hundred, general regulations by the addition of section six thirteen, temporary storage structures.
Thank you. Before you tonight is the draft ordinance for the temporary storage structures. Um, staff's been working on this for, I think, over a year, prior to my coming even. Um, on June twenty-seventh, um, I had a conversation with, um, the city attorney, and he directed us to just rewrite the ordinance, and so we did that, um, based on kind of trying to find a compromise between what the planning commission and the city council, um, had for their, their ideals and perspectives regarding the ordinance. Um, we broke the categories for the temporary storage structures into three different categories. The portable storage structures are more like your pods-type units, so those are ten by ten, um, by twenty feet in length, and those are more appropriate for the residential area, although certainly are allowable in any of the districts that, um, portable storage is allowed. Um, the cargo containers are basically a semi-trailer, but without the wheels, and the semi-trailer, um, it's pretty self-explanatory, it's a fifty-three-foot trailer, um, that would be used for, for storage purposes. There was a public hearing held, um, and published for June fourth, the planning commission considered it on July twenty-fifth, and, um, it's before you this evening. Um, I can kinda go through it if that would be helpful, or otherwise I could just go through the parts that there's a conflict between, um, what I've heard from some of the council members and what the planning commission's perspective is. So, um, basically, the temporary storage structures are intended to provide temporary storage for household goods on residential property or for business goods on business properties. Um, there's a section of definitions which defines the different, um, terms that are used primarily in this section of the ordinance, and then the general, um, temporary structure storage requirements, which is section point zero three, kinda gets into the details of the ordinance and when temporary structures are allowed, um, and the section four deals more with the specifics of going through, um, the different zoning districts and which type of structure is allowed in which zoning district. So, if you look at your chart on, um, the section point zero four, the residential zoning district is intended to allow for, um, the structures that are the smaller size, and they're a little more limited, um, they're intended to be on the driveway on residential property, um, and then if you go up a level from that, in intensity, that brings you to the medical services and public institutional zoning districts, and that is intended to be either the portable storage containers or the cargo containers, which are the semi-trailers without wheels, um, and they're limited to sixty days, um, by zoning permits with a sixty-day extension by the planning commission, and two structures are, two temporary structures are permitted, um, for parcels in that district, and there's some, some setback requirements that are detailed on the bottom of that. The C one, C three, C four, and C five are all of your downtown zoning districts, and so it's thought that perhaps one, um, might be an appropriate number of semi-trailers to be able to be parked in that area, just again, in trying to balance the needs of a business, um, needing storage, and the needs of the community to retain high-quality development and high-quality appearance. When you're in this category and above, you're allowed to have a semi-trailer, it's allowed to be, um, only, it's allowed only when it's screened, though, in the downtown zoning district. And the setbacks are listed there, primarily because there are no setbacks in the, uh, in the downtown zoning districts for the most part. The next category up is the C two zoning district, that's your highway commercial properties. The planning commission recommended two temporary storage structures, um, and that they would be allowed for sixty days with potentially another sixty-day extension, um, but if they were wanting to screen them, they would be able to have unlimited number of structures, but a zoning permit would still be required. And again, there's some setback requirements that are detailed, and it does have to be on the same type of surface as is required for parking. For industrial zoning, the planning commission recommended two structures, um, and an unlimited timeline even for it to be unscreened, although if it's more than a hundred and twenty days, um, the planning commission rec, or the staff, excuse me, recommended that it probably should be screened from view from residential, if there's an adjacent residential. And then for the, the timeline, it's basically not, not required to be screened otherwise, except for if it's adjacent to residential. So those are kind of the quick overviews, there's some criteria in here that basically says while a building permit is in place, there's no, um, no timeline that pertains to temporary storage structures as long as the, the type of structure is permitted in the district where the property is located. Also, if there's a catastrophic event, um, such as a demo, a fire or something like that, that they would be able to have one year of being able to have a temporary, those temporary storage structures without the timeline. Um, so those, that's kind of the quick overview. Are there questions, comments? We can go through the different items that were, seem to be potentially, um, an issue between the planning commission and what I'd heard from a few of the council members, if you'd like, how, what direction would you like to go?
Okay. Justin?
I'm not great at all.
Josh, Dick?
Uh, I know, for, for myself, I know we, I had a discussion with Mike and, and he said that the other day, just to make sure I understood what they were saying and how it affected the people. I think, I think the way it's written now, it, there has to be some control, I understand that, you know, and, uh, I, I think the way it looks, that this gives some flexibility, I think, to the, uh, to the businesses involved. Um, one thing I was thinking about just today is the fact that, you know, I, and I think you, I think you, uh, addressed it too, is that, like, in the industrial or some of the industrial areas, that, I think you said unlimited number, did you?
They would be allowed unlimited number, they don't have to be screened unless they're adjacent, which means across the street over next to, um, residential, as long as it's owned industrial. And even the commercial is unlimited, um, as long as it's screened.
Could you discuss what screened mean? Cause we talked about this in detail.
Yes, sure. Screened is, um, I, I looked through our, our landscape ordinance, and the previous version of the ordinance basically just said it needs to conform to the landscape ordinance. I wanted to make sure we were very clear on what, what we are expecting for screening, because, um, our, our fence height is generally around six feet, and obviously structures are a little higher than six feet, so it's not gonna completely cover the structure, but the screening that we're requiring is that, um, it would be restricted visibility from the public streets or adjoining properties to a height of at least six feet above grade, regardless of the zoning district. Screening must be seventy-five percent opaque and maybe a fence or landscaping, if the landscaping is at least seventy-five percent opaque within two years of installation. That's just pretty much the standard landscaping code definition of screening. You certainly can modify it if you think that it needs modification, but that's what I think seems appropriate.
So, so what that would mean basically in reality is, is that somebody could put up a chain-linked fence and then put the slats, the slats, and that would be equal seventy-five percent roughly, just so you have some idea what that would, and that's just to cover it if people are able to see it. If it's put behind their building?
If it's behind the building, um, if there's other buildings nearby, you might have to do some screening, like, for instance, um, the Melrose One Stop has, I think, four existing units, they're pretty not visible, but they are visible from the north and the west sides, and they're zoned commercial, so they would have to do a little bit of fencing around there, but I don't think it would be obtrusive to their site. Um, and I was looking, I went through, um, and just did a drive-through of the city, and Main Street Repair has one, Shaggy's has, I think, about three, the Fox Trucking, I think, has about two. It's hard to tell because we're not regulating semi-trucks that are generally being used, we're just regulating the ones that are being used for storage. Um, so Gen X has, I think, one, Warrior looked like they had one, um, Melrose Metal Works, I think, had somewhere around five, um, Carstens looked like they had maybe three or four, CCC had, I think, one, but it didn't have wheels. The Melrose One Stop, um, is four, that's the first one that's commercial besides the Main Street Repair. Willow has, I think, two, um, Rock Bottom has two-ish, it's hard to tell exactly on that. Um, Save, there's three, so the, Billy, that's the only one that's probably the most burdensome in terms of complying, because they're just sitting in the parking lot, so they're not screened and it is commercial. Um, and so if we kept it at two, that would be a little bit of an issue, um, and then Leadstone, I think that's industrial, if I'm not mistaken, I was gonna look on that for sure. Do you remember, Mike, if that's industrial or commercial?
Which one?
Leadstone?
That is commercial.
It is commercial, okay, so, and they have one on the north side, and I think they have two, sorry, they have one on the south side of their building, and they have two that's on the property, um, just west of the Legion, so, that's kind of, there's, I guess, two properties that have three. Other than that, everything else would conform to the code that we're proposing.
Question like that, let's just, you said Shaggy's?
Yes.
I guess I just seen that. Now, if they're using them to drive, you know, like, they put stuff in, would they have to cover up where the doors open with the fence?
Um... They, let's see, Shaggy's is zoned industrial, so they don't have to screen unless they're adjacent to residential, and I guess there's residential across the street, but it's really behind the building, and I guess you can kinda see it from residences down the street, but that's not really adjacent, so I wouldn't think they would need to screen on that side, regardless, even if they need to.
But in general, if it's an open door, they're gonna have to put a fence, you know, like, they're gonna have to have a gate in front of them also?
I, probably, to be able to access it, that would make sense. Um, you- Usually, you might want, usually as a business, they might want to locate it so that they can access it from facing their building and screen the outside of it, not the portion that faces their building. So they wouldn't necessarily have to fence all sides, but there's some, there's some creative ways to do it that you wouldn't necessarily have to do that, just so that you couldn't see the structure from, other than the above six feet of it, but the structure from like the residential properties.
Okay. This, the permit fee of fifteen dollars?
Yes.
Is that per unit?
They can apply for more than one per application, as long as it's on a similar timeframe.
What does that say?
That's saying a business has three, they can apply for three all at the same time.
Yeah, so.
If it's a sixty day limit, then they would be applying for all three for that sixty day timeframe or whatnot.
Yeah, so per unit then?
It's per application. So I don't much care if it's one unit or three units.
Oh, there, okay, okay.
It's just per application.
And the intent for that fifteen dollars is simply to ensure that with the documentation, they know what the rules are and then that we can have a clock to start.
And we're not, it's not intended to be making money off of it, it's just kind of documented.
And this will be, if this gets enacted, it'd be, you know, they'd have to apply even though the thing is on the property at this time?
We have in this ordinance a clause that exempts existing businesses for, where did that go?
I think it was eighteen months, Lisa.
I think it's until January first of.
Then they would have.
Any temporary structure in place on August sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. I did take pictures this afternoon, so we do have an accurate or semi-accurate accounting of that, until January first, two thousand and twenty, at which point they'll need to be brought into compliance. So it's exempt if they're existing today.
Okay. Until two thousand and twenty.
Yep.
Okay.
I feel like this is a pretty good attempt at balancing the needs of the businesses, the needs of the city. The planning commission felt like it was a good ordinance that encouraged businesses to invest in improvements when they grow beyond what they're allowed with these, within these constraints. Kind of gives some borders, but they're loose enough that I think it's pretty flexible for most businesses to be able to work with.
I think one of the clarifications that we need to make sure is we have some amended verbiage in here as well that we could, that we could adopt. So we have it as the planning commission recommendation and then another verbiage in there as well. So the question for, for the council tonight is which verbiage do you like to see? Which one fits best? Is it the amended version, which I believe was a lot of the comments that I've heard from the council members when we were working through this? Just to make sure that we, when we put this in the final format or the final draft, that we've put it in the right final draft versus the one that we anticipate.
And I can take a moment and just go through each of those couple items and just see if we can get some consensus on that, if that would be okay. So the first one is for the C two zoning district, the planning commission recommended two would be the maximum number of temporary storage structures. Is this acceptable? As I said, we've got, almost every property is below two currently, that's commercial, except for. C two, the Melrose One Stop has four. Save has three and Leadstone has three. And another option would be to say two screened and two unscreened. For a total of four, that's certainly also another option.
Okay. What are you guys thinking?
If you have some of them, then I already have more than two.
I think we all, yeah, I think then in some ways you almost have to go what?
Two screened.
Whoever has the maximum right now, I mean, what do you say, three or four?
The other thing to keep in mind is that they do have until two thousand and twenty to continue to use what they have before they would have to conform.
Well, that's hard. I mean, if they're using them for storage now, they're probably going to keep using them for storage, so they're not just going to get rid of them.
And I can say the planning commission, the reason that they wanted to do two as opposed to a larger number is that they wanted to maintain the integrity of the community so that we continue to attract high-quality businesses. And they felt that at some point, if a business is using semi-trailers for storage, at some point they probably should just look at upgrading, maybe adding on to their building or doing some longer-term solution. And so that was their rationale, so, just food for thought.
Yeah, and I understand that, I just, it's expensive.
I understand.
You can buy a pod for thirty-five hundred bucks. You won't add on to a building for even close to that.
Certainly. Is there consensus on a number or a suggestion for a number?
I had a question, and this is something that Mike talked about today, was, well, obviously we did our due diligence and had a public hearing and nobody showed up surprised, because they never do. Have we reached out to any of those people that you've listed as where you drove past today to get any breadth of what they might be thinking?
I have not reached out to them. I know that at least one or two of them are aware that we've been studying this, but they have not reached out to us as being at all concerned or wanting to know what's.
Because it's not, it's not the fifteen dollars or per container or application, but in this ordinance, you're saying in most districts, there have to be, they have to get a durable surface, which is either a tubus or concrete. We're saying they have to be fenced. We're saying that, all right, Mr. Businessman, you're going to incur some costs here, in some cases, significant costs.
Is there a reason why we want them on concrete or tar?
The thought, I think, was just, basically was consistent with what other communities had for an ordinance. If you want to have that be different, you certainly could. One suggestion was even just pavers on the, under the corners where the supports were so that it didn't sort of sink into the ground, kind of a thing, but it's up to you, whatever you'd like. You could say if it's in a parking area that it'd have to be that, or if it's not in a parking area, it could be, you know, there maybe could be different criteria if it's in a screened backyard area. It's up to you to frame it however you'd like.
For myself, you know, you mentioned Melrose One Stop has four. And, you know, one thing about their containers is they kind of match the color of the building. You really don't notice them too much at all, whether there'd be two there, four there. I don't think it would really be an issue at their particular place of business. Now, if they stuck out like a sore thumb, maybe it'd be more noticeable. Then they're supposed to be screened too, you know, so.
Could we do something that either you screen them or you match your building color? I mean, they can get painted.
That's up to you.
I mean, I don't know, Dick, what do you think of that?
I kind of like that.
Screen them if they're white and your building's blue, or you paint them blue?
I mean, it's a little bit subjective. Well, I mean, I suppose if it's not located near the building, then it wouldn't matter if they're matching super close or not, but I just appreciate when things are not very subjective, like it's pretty clear either they need the ordinance or they don't. So having it match the color of the building is pretty clear to follow. So that wouldn't be a bad, a bad suggestion.
I don't know, I think the, if we already have one of the businesses that has four, I think we at least have to do four, almost like a grandfathered-in type thing because it's kind of hard to.
Are you thinking on January second, they're not going to take two of them away?
Absolutely not. And they've made that, you know, like, just One Stop in general has made that lot look beautiful compared to what it did. Took all those old semi-trailers out and put actual nice, like Dick said, they look nice. They almost matched the building yard, they even see them there.
Maybe that would be the way to put it, is those that have the four there are grandfathered-in?
You could, you could almost say.
Without a date.
And you could almost say that, especially like the One Stop, they're almost seventy-five percent screened just by the way that they've got it located on the property. You really can't see but for the one end on two or the three, two or so of them. So you could do two are permitted, screened, and two are permitted unscreened.
I think if they have some flexibility in there, I think it'd make it easier for everybody.
And that would work for everything but the Save property, and I'm not even sure with the Save property, who's, who's storage.
I think those are Leadstones. Because I believe Leadstone is kind of leasing that building, so.
They have some significant space concerns.
One thing I was thinking about also, and I don't know, it probably should be at least brought up is the fact that, you know, in, in the case of a couple of businesses that have these pods, is this per, per business or per location? So if it's per business, now you've got Leadstone and Stern's Veterinary Outlet. So now it can, Leadstone have four and Stern's Veterinary Outlet have four.
Per parcel.
Yeah, well, you know, so.
And that's how it is in here, per parcel, right?
I'm just checking on that.
I think in Carson's, they've got squiggle paintings and Carson's industry. So now they could have eight?
No, we could just say per, per parcel, like Josh said.
He's got a good point, though.
Well, clarify at the beginning. I think if you did say per parcel, I think that'd be pretty safe, wouldn't you think?
Yeah, I think so. So we'll add per parcel to the first column, or the first row of the column, or first column, first row on the chart of point oh four. And then do I hear the consensus is to go with two unscreened for commercial C two and two screened?
So what you guys are thinking, are you guys thinking of whatever is grandfathered-in today, like if they had four?
I think for sure if somebody's got, I mean, we at least do the math to what somebody has today, because that, like I said, that's a hard thing to say, clean one all, take it all, or.
So a future saying, everybody else is going to be two, but as of.
Oh, okay.
Tonight, this is what you had. You can't have any more?
Well, I think that's, that should be a conversation we should have with, honestly, there's, I know there's one business in town who is absolutely scrambling for space and this person wants to be able to expand, but they can't, because of the constraint they have for space. So this is the alternative that they have. So I think before, on a number like that, that's something we should probably have a specific conversation with that particular industry to see what their limit might be or what their future plan is, because they, I mean, this is one of those that are on that tipping area for space for Melrose, so. So it's hard to come up with a number for that one, so it's hard to just limit it to whatever that number is tonight, but.
I would say at a minimum, you'd want to set it at four. I mean, as, as the lowest you could go, but a higher number if you, if it deems necessary, you know, through, through a process or, but that's where it's hard to define what the process is in the future.
We could do it by conditional use permit.
Yeah, if you wanted to add more, you could. And that's something Lisa and I did talk very briefly about, is okay, what is, so we set this thing and then we get a very unique situation where it's like, hey, this is it, Melrose, this is what I got and this is what I can do. Is there a conditional use permit process that I can go through to facilitate unlimited or ten, whatever that might be? So that might be another compromise. Or just make a, you know, anything more than four containers requires a conditional use permit and then we don't even have to worry about this. You know, that's another option. You know, so then.
Additional use.
You want to tell them what the difference is, Scott?
If somebody a conditional use is forever. Conditional use permit, same idea, except you can go next period, it's not.
All right, guys.
I don't know. I almost don't even mind what Mike just said.
Well, I still think there is, there's some concerns from the planning commission and they did raise legitimate concerns about pods in residential areas.
Oh, absolutely.
And so the concern that they have for the commercial and industrial areas, maybe we could, Lisa and I could spend some time and run it through the planning commission one more time about this other alternative, this conditional use permit for the other areas, you know, make it reasonable within residential areas, but the commercial areas would be more through interim use permit type scenario with, and these would be the general conditions and we can come up with some of those general conditions, more than four or five, whatever that might be. That might be a good compromise.
Are you getting more or less against it?
I myself, the residential, I'm kind of almost fine with the way they have it written, the limits. I don't have any problem with that, because I wouldn't want to have my neighbor have one sit on their property for a little time either, so. But the commercial part, I just, instead we got people out there with them now, I like the pods compared to a semi-trailer. I mean, I would almost be partial to saying no semi-trailers unless they're DOT licensed and going to be pulled down the road. They're gone, you put a pod there, because at least the pods are, you can trim around them, they don't have weeds growing underneath them. I think if we have them, I don't know about the whole tar and the concrete part underneath, but if we haven't put pavers underneath to lift it up, well, you just invite things to live underneath there. So I think flat on a piece of gravel, you're pretty safe to say that you're not going to.
And the cargo container is basically the same as a semi-trailer, but without the wheels. And so that might be kind of that middle of the road that, that gets to where you're, where you're aiming towards. The other thing to keep in mind is that if the semi-trailer is DOT certified and road-ready, it doesn't count towards their numbers, even if they're using it for storage.
Well, I think that's fine, because what we have in some areas now is, they used to be semi-trailers, but they're clearly not DOT, they're missing axles, they're missing reefer in fronts, they're not in any road-ready condition. And that's kind of where some of the heartburn's coming.
All right. What do you guys want to do?
So the suggestions that you have before you is one, do absolutely, is do nothing, just leave it as is where it is and no ordinance. Option two is to make some of these changes that we talked about, specifically in regard to the four and basically adopting the, the alternative language, adopting that. Now, thirdly, is send it back to the planning commission, have them work up a scenario for, it can interim use permit, but still restricting the residential as kind of we've identified tonight. Those are the three that I captured that you've said. Did I miss any other? I think that's it. I think those are the three primary options you have in front of you.
It's probably more staff work than anything else, but I like the interim use option.
Okay. You're good.
And are you thinking on the?
If they need more than?
Well, just across the board.
Like residential, the whole works?
No, 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 I'm saying like whether it's a semi-trailer, a cargo, or a pod, or whether they are painted or screened or have footing and foundation underneath them or just concrete or the tubus or whatever.
Because I get Joe's point too, I mean, you screen around the front, now you're adding gates to the front, I mean.
Well, I think that's why with the interim use, we can set it just like a conditional use, you set conditions. Okay, well, draw out your lot, show me where you're going to have this so that we can look at it at an individual basis, because that's my one problem with this whole thing, is that it's a blanket and we have good operators, we have bad operators, we have better operators, we have unique situations, whether they're behind the building, in front of the building, whether they're already halfway screened, whether they're painted the color of the building, where we can control each one of those steps on an interim basis versus one blanket, cover all, everything. And granted, like I said, Mike, it's going to cost more staff time, but then at least we can use our thinking hats.
You got control.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And an interim, an interim use would function very similar to a conditional use permit. They'd have to submit an application, it would require a public hearing, there'd be the three hundred dollar fee, but it does give you that control and it does give them the, the lower price use of storage space, so.
How do we set that fee for an interim use?
It's, covers basically the. But it does give you that control, and it does give them the, the lower price use of storage space, so.
How do we set that fee for an interim use?
It's, covers basically the cost of publication.
Yeah.
It's pretty much a standard, it pretty much covers the cost of the processing.
It basically covers the publication costs, basically one hour of Scott's time to review it when it's all said and done, and then the recording fees. And that's, and actually, we're, that doesn't quite cover it, the 300, does it?
Can we use a different term then, and so we don't need to have that?
But you would probably still have the cost, so it would kind of be.
What he's saying is, instead of an actual interim, or interim use, can we call it something else and still have, to be able to put the conditions on without the public hearing and without
Right.
the filing and without the.
I, yeah, 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 yeah. It, because it.
We don't want to be overly burdensome.
Right, because these guys don't want to move fast, and they want to move quickly, and then, you know, that's. The challenge with that is when Lisa and I are trying, when Lisa is trying to administer these things, it's very, it might become subjective, and that's where we want to be very careful on, is that we have some type of guidelines or rules for us to follow, and through that interim use, it's basically, here's what my plan is, and then you submit it to the governing bodies to see if that's appropriate or not. It's hard for like staff to just say, yeah, that makes sense, and go ahead, because we'll be, it's, it's hard, because there's perceived biases and, you know, and, you know.
Right, and, and when there's things reviewed on a case by case basis, that's when it's appropriate to be reviewed by the planning commission and the council.
Or just leave it at the planning, you know, just power it down to the planning commission level, or whatever you, or, you know.
Yeah, maybe something like that.
Can we give them authority to just, we don't have to sign off on these things.
You've done this, you've, you've authorized, we haven't talked to Scott, but, I mean, you've powered things down to the EDA board and Parks Board for decision making. So that would eliminate, you know, potentially two weeks of the process.
But you're saving on the time, instead of being a thirty or forty-five day process.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
Planning commission would appreciate that.
But would you have to do that with all these then? Every one of these would have to go through that same thing?
Only the ones that exceeded whatever number that you've set. Like if you say, well, you can have two screened, two unscreened, and anything beyond that, beyond those four, then you need to get an IUP for. I mean, that would be a reasonable, reasonable thing to do.
So, so they can have two or four, or whatever, that, without this interim thing, and if they go over that, then they'd have to, okay, I got you. Yeah, that's fine.
You good with that?
Does it make sense to set the numbers tonight, so then we come back with just the language for the IUP and the minor revisions that we've discussed, since we're all sort of focused on numbers right now anyway?
Lisa, what were the, what was the highest, what was the biggest one, biggest user, four, five?
Melrose Metal Works might have had five, but I'm not sure, I think, I think one of those might have been, but.
And they're industrial.
But they're industrial, so that's not relevant. Really, it's the.
Commercial. I would say the highest you said was one stop, which was four, so I think we should at least do four, because grandfather, I mean.
I think, and I think you could do two screened, two unscreened, and that would cover most of it, especially if you allow screening to be painting to match the building. So then it's on.
So being that they got two in the center and two on the outside, the two in the center could be the screened ones?
Yeah, they basically are screened right there, seventy-five percent.
Screened with the container?
Well, they're screened with another container.
With the container itself.
No, I'm just saying, because that's, that's the wordage that we're going to throw out there, is that the sides have to be covered well. I mean, I'm fine with that, but, I mean, like I said, the whole, the whole painting thing to match would look a lot better than a rusty trailer.
Right.
But it's up to you guys too, I mean.
And we can work on that language if we get the intent of what you're, what you're wanting, and you can always revise the numbers. I just would prefer if we can get kind of nailed on the numbers a little bit here, so we have less variables, we can come back with a better, more finalized version next month.
True. I'm fine with four.
Four?
Four, four regardless of screening, or two screened, two unscreened?
I, like you say, industrial doesn't matter? So is it commercial, is where we're talking?
Um, we're talking about commercial right now.
Right, yeah.
Industrial is a separate next conversation.
Maybe, let's just screen them all.
I, I mean, I, I guess I'd be fine with the two screened, two unscreened. I don't know.
Two and two?
Yeah, fine.
I'm sorry, I missed what.
Two screened, two unscreened? Just one question on that. The unscreened ones are in the middle of nowhere?
Of the what?
I'm just asking, since this, well, if they put the two in the middle of nowhere. Like in the middle of the property, those two here, or the other two right by the building? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And they screen the one by the building, but these two are completely exposed?
No, I know, this is why this is a whole ball, this is opening up a huge can of worms, like. Why do you, do you even worry about the screening?
Should have something, I mean, if it's about a residential. I understand the plate, you know, especially after so many years they start rusting out, and.
I, I think I would be comfortable with four screened and two unscreened, if we kept the timeline for the unscreened at sixty days.
The unscreened.
If it's not screened, they'd have a sixty day permit with a sixty day renewal, and after that, they'd have to screen it, whether by painting it to match the building, the landscaping, or a fence.
So I don't know if I was following you there, so they can have four containers.
Four containers that are unlimited as long as they're screened, and two containers.
Unscreened.
Unscreened with a limited timeline.
But they have a sixty day.
Six, yeah, so more of a temporary thing. But with painting as an option, and with screening just a six foot fence, or landscaping seventy-five percent within two years, I mean, that gives them a fair amount of options for screening. And then with the IUP option, that would increase, allow the increase in the numbers.
A six foot fence, really kind of pokey when we're talking about a semi trailer.
I think it probably almost would look worse.
You could do an eight.
I, I do, I seriously, you put a six foot fence up and you park, even the pod that's sitting flat on the ground and it's sticking above.
Or nine feet tall, eight feet tall or there.
I think it's going to make it look worse than just seeing.
What it does is probably take the, the ground visibility and reduces that, you know, the, the uncut grass around the bottom of it, that sort of thing, but you can, you can change it if you'd like.
Let's make it simple, what? What do you guys want to do?
I'll make it simple, four pods, and anything after that, you got to have the permit, no screening.
So four unscreened, is what you're saying?
On the pods, or containers or whatever, and then screen the semis?
You said, oh, four, four, four of the small.
Four pods, because that's what we have now today. We have somebody with four, so they're grandfathered.
They're four semi trailers.
Oh, it's four semi trailers?
Yeah, it's four semi trailers. Almost everyone is using semi trailers currently, not the, not the portable storage.
Oh, I thought we were talking about.
Containers.
They're using semi trailers.
Like Melrose one stop, that's a container.
You know?
That's not trailers, that's.
Those are containers, yeah, that's right. Okay, so four cargo containers is what you're talking then?
Yeah, that's what I guess I was hoping.
Okay, so four cargo containers unscreened.
And then screen the semis.
And then, if they want to do semi trailers instead of cargo containers?
Yeah.
They would have to follow up what numbers?
Well, you have in here the definition that it has to be DOTed.
Yep, they can do DOTed if they're wanting to do.
They have to be DOTed.
Well, they wouldn't have to be DOTed if they're just used for storage, and then they don't count if they're DOTed.
So Leadstone would be not have to be DOTed. Leadstone is good, they don't have to do anything.
Because they're DOTed?
Because they're DOTed and they come in and out every day.
Yeah.
I, I think, yeah, if you're going to have a semi trailer on your lot, it's got to be DOTed, and that'll just entice them to go to the pod.
I agree with Justin, I think you want them DOTed.
DOT them, and then like, so that's just that yearly cost, that every year they got to get it done, and.
And then that eliminates the problem of no axles and, and flat tires and no reefer, and they won't pass DOT.
So four cargo.
I think the ones that are out there aren't DOTed, most of them.
Well, and, and most of the ones you're probably thinking of are probably on industrial, so we'll talk about industrial next, but for just the C2 commercial.
C2.
Four unscreened cargo containers is what I'm hearing, for an unlimited time period, and removing the allowance of semi trailers.
Say, say that again?
So four unscreened cargo containers.
Yeah.
Am I hearing an unlimited period of time regardless of screening, unless it's adjacent to residential? Or do you want to have a timeline and have different regulations for screening versus not?
No, I was trying to make it simple.
Yeah, no, we're just making this way too complicated when we, when we change everything around from semi trailers to these.
Then we're good with cargo and unlimited?
Yep.
Okay, so then the industrial, how many semi?
Industrial wasn't limited, was it?
Pardon?
Industrial wasn't limited.
Unlimited, requires zoning permit, just requires screening if it's adjacent to residential, beyond one hundred and twenty days. So the planning commission recommended two semi trailers, we've got up to five, potentially five, it's hard to tell exactly four or five, something like that. So we could change that to four semi trailers pretty easily. Meaning has, not DOT, if they're DOTed, they can have as many as they want.
I mean, I think the semi trailers that are there then grandfathered in, I don't know, no more, unless they're DOTed?
Yeah, I think.
No more semi trailers unless they're DOTed, I mean, that's going to make it simple.
So just cargo?
The ones that are there, they're grandfathered in, so that's a simple thing that's already done.
And then just cargo containers if they're not DOTed, or what if they're not, if they have non DOT certified?
Cargo trailers aren't DOT?
Aren't the cargo containers, they just come and pick them up on a trailer.
Yeah.
It's your axles and that is where the DOT comes into effect.
Right, right, so you're, am I hearing that you're saying the semi trailers have to be DOTed to be able to be.
Just a semi trailer that, yeah, if you're going to pull a semi trailer into your lot that has wheels on it, or has wheels on it, but then ten years down the road, it's not going to have it, well, you got to keep it DOT compliant. Otherwise, you buy a pod.
And then those that are there already grandfathered in.
Just the way it feels, fine.
For an unlimited period of time?
I think so, at this point.
Okay, so I'm, if I'm hearing correctly, remove semi trailer from industrial zoning and just allow it as a cargo container or portable storage container? And allow what number? Four cargo containers? Okay, and the timeline stays unlimited. Okay, I think that's what I need to know.
And are we doing four containers, can they go over that if they start paying?
Oh, with an IUP?
There you go.
Like, can they go over the four containers if they do?
If it's DOT, then we don't regulate the number.
Other than the containers.
Yes, no, I'm just saying with the permit thing, can they go over four?
With an IUP, yeah, and we'll work up the language and bring that back to your next meeting.
Because then if they would want to go over four, well, then they just come to us for that permit.
Yep.
We threw that out. Yeah, they'll be coming to us only if they go over the four.
Right.
So the way I understand it then, and Lisa, tell me if you understand it this way too, because we want to make sure we meet your intent, is that we'll take this verbiage that we worked on tonight as a working group here, we will take another stab at this. Would you like us to run this up the flagpole with the planning commission with these new suggestions, or with the, with this new guidance? Make sure that they're, if they have any tweaks to it, and then bring it back to the council? Is that good?
I think they should look at it again.
Okay, because I think there would be, there's a lot of changes in this, so.
The only thing I want to make sure that we are certain on is that any non DOT semi trailer that's in existence today, we're going to let go forever.
Until they're needing replacement or, or until they're removed or need replacing.
Say that again?
So what was suggested was that the condition point oh five, or sorry, oh, point oh six, number five, it currently had said, any temporary storage structure in place on August sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen will be exempted until, and we had set the date as January one, two thousand and twenty, at which point they'll need to be brought into compliance, and it was suggested tonight that it would be changed so that they, the units in place today would be exempted until the units are removed or need, need replacing, at which point the property would need to be brought into compliance.
My concern is, is that the ones that are non DOT now that are falling apart are not going to be leaving anytime.
Right.
So we want.
Guys, quite honestly, you said they need to be, or need replacement, they need replacement now.
So, change it how you like, you can leave that January first, two thousand and twenty, I mean, I don't think the ordinance is that restrictive that it's kind of.
Can we do the two thousand and twenty on the semi trailers, and then after that, you have to have it DOTed?
Otherwise, put a screen around it.
Yeah, they would, they would just need to come into compliance in one way, shape, or form, so leave the January first, two thousand and twenty is what I'm hearing.
On semi trailers.
For anything that's in place today, okay. I think I know basically what you'd like, I'll get that before the planning commission and bring it back for you next month.
All right.
Okay.
Speed of government.
Could, could we maybe, maybe if that's going to be brought up to the planning commission, I know they had a public hearing on this already, but you know, I don't, like you say, nobody came, I wonder if Mary, many people were aware of it, you know, do they read the notices in the papers, you know? When, when this comes into place for the planning and zoning, would they want to reach out to these businesses to have them come in and give their input?
Treat it like you do on a, on a variance where you mail out letters to three hundred people, three hundred feet, well, we've already just drove past, so it's pretty easy to know who this is affecting, can we reach out to them?
Sure, you tell us, we'll make it happen.
Yeah, if they could be at the meeting.
Would you like us to notify the businesses and the properties within like a hundred feet of the businesses, just so that it's fair and we're not just targeting the businesses themselves?
That's right.
So you're both side of the story? Probably, do we want to do it as a formal public hearing, or do we just want to notify them?
I would just do a notify them.
That's what I'm thinking, and we'll just maybe send a draft document to the ordinance to each other.
Yeah, send a letter, and then we can make a phone call.
And I think, I think, and most of us are in agreement with the residential issue, so I don't think that we have to be concerned with the residence at this point.
No, I think the residential issue, you can just, that one can be.
So.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
I said, I think most of us are in agreement with the residential issues or statements that were put in there, so I'd be more concerned with the C1, C2, and industrial.
But I think to be fair, probably including the residences, if there's any immediately surrounding that, some business, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, sounds good.
I would, I'd like to send it back, because I'm just really concerned, you know, that we just packed this way too much, and I'd rather, you know, make it noted that I'm not comfortable with this, let them talk more about it, okay? So we'll send it back, so no motion on that. New business? None?
Right.
Okay, information items, utility commission, meeting minutes, schools and conferences.
Pickleball, your pickleball court should be, Gary, when's your pickleball court going to be done? Pickleball. Your pickleball court should be, Gary, when's your pickleball court going to be done? Yeah. So I would encourage the council members to get out and play some pickleball. It'll be in Metal Lark Park. Challenge any of the council members to a game. So let me know.
Yeah, because it's in your backyard and they'll be practicing. What about the, uh, swing?
Zip line?
Alright, anything else? Can I get a motion to approve this meeting?
It's a move.
To approve this meeting?
Get a motion to adjourn this meeting. Hey, can I get a second?
Second.
Oh, favor see eye. Oh, it's moving, Gary.